Go ahead. No, no, I've gone as far as I can.
As far as you need to. I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, just on the second page. Julian had mentioned about the roads. Town accepted them and John stated that he would confirm with the information with the town council, but no, we Julian assertion was inaccurate, and I say, no, we we always used to allow subdivision rules of roads to be launched. They weren't done right and and clarified or, you know, by town engineer. We always had it done.
Yes, I don't think we refused any.
And that's just what I wanted to say, it wasn't, it was accurate. Not in. That's it.
I just had an address on you know, that consideration of subdivision, it says 149, 159.
Good catch.
So it's about it.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next owner of the business is an A and R. Application for 377 East County Road. Julian?
Right. Julian Vitrova from Northern American Design. It's a piece of property on East County Road. We're creating two lots that conform with zoning rules and regulations. They both have 200 feet of frontage. One of them is 5.18 acres and the other one is 9.49 acres. Basically taking one parcel and dividing it into two. If we can put it up on, never going to do that anymore, don't put it up on that.
It's up to John.
Control room, please pull up the 377 East County Road plan, please.
It's an old Ford's property.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, the river goes somewhere.
Thank you.
It's actually outside the boundary, doesn't come through this land.
No, just around the edge.
Around the edge.
Yep.
So this is the split?
That's split, this is one lot, this is the other one. And this is an existing driveway here, an existing power, nice power.
Yep.
They did all big time.
Wow.
All the way to here, all the way up to there. So, because it used to be, there was at one time, it's not there now, there was a couple houses there.
Oh yeah. Can you shrink it a little bit so you can see the whole thing, just minimize a little bit of that minus sign at the top?
Lived there. Yeah, they don't ask what was going on there. But.
There you go, perfect, thank you, awesome.
So that's straightforward. Asking for your endorsement.
On the GIS, it showed that this was like already blocked, I don't know.
Um, that, there used to be at one time, this was all owned by the same
Yep.
same person, but that's, the GIS doesn't depict it correctly. See that, there's that one that you're?
Yeah, it's something like that.
Yeah, so.
But it's just not.
This is the perimeter of the property. That's how it splits off.
Already mentioned too, Julian, about Zone A and that, and he knows all about it and.
Does he see how it comes through the backside?
That's right.
You have adequate frontage and area.
Yes.
There's no guardrails or anything right there?
No, no, there's actually, this driveway exists.
Yeah.
Nope, there's a low, low access to the property.
This is 187 and then 25.
Yeah.
Yep.
Motion? For a public speaker. For a public speaker, that's.
No, it's not a public hearing.
I make a motion to endorse.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion than this one? Hearing them, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Endorse the bylaw and the copy, please.
That's one for you.
Copy, sir, there's signatures. Pick it up and bring it to our straight. And so there's, there's too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. I only have a discussion for potential rezoning of parcels 26, 27.01, 27, 28, and 29 on Maple Ave. It's
Doesn't make no difference.
I guess if they had a request of.
So I did share with you gentlemen, I handed you yours this afternoon, and I just handed Keith and Dick theirs. Couple emails that Mark shared with me from the butters. From the other property owners.
So, this is kind of an extension of a zone change that you had proposed.
Right there? Yeah, after the last zone change petition to town meeting. Coming out of that, we had a few, a few owners approach me and say they'd also be in favor. Board seemed to be in favor. So as of last meeting, I just wanted, I came up just to let you know that we've, we've assembled three property owners that would be in favor if the town does want to rezone to create some more commercial or mixed use space. I wouldn't be the proponent of it, but I'm just here to convey that we have three owners together that would be in favor if the, if the board so choose to move it forward.
Excuse me, one just sec. Control room, can you, you can stop sharing now, we're all set with that plan. Just wanted to.
I like, I guess. My, my first question is is there a particular plan for the, for this section of property? Any specific ideas, what you're looking for, what you're thinking about?
So it's, it's five parcels between number 184 and 206 Maple Ave. I think the thought was to extend the town center two zoning or potentially the commercial. Commercial and town center directly to the north. So it'll be an extension of that zoning. But there is no specific plan for these properties?
How many acres?
It's like, it's like a nine or 10 acre, I can, I can add them up, but it's all different accessories, cars, I don't have to total it.
I think it's fairly close.
Yeah, it's just a rough estimate. This is commercial. We have five parcels in total. And I, you know, if the, if the board wanted to go further, I, I think the next owner down would potentially be also in favor, Zoppo. But I, I don't know that anyone's contacted him.
Oh, you've been busy. Reached out to him the other day.
Alright.
He's trying to get back to me.
Comments from the board?
I'm in favor of it. I believe, you know, 56 is a good road. From past experience in Central Mass, it is now federally, can be federally funded for upgrading and things like that, so who knows what's going to happen in the future? And to me, if it's something that can create business of some sort, I'm, I'm, I'm happy for that.
Keith?
I like the idea of it too. You know, there's a lot more, you know, looking at the regulation use table that John made. R60 doesn't provide much business opportunities, TC2 does. I guess my only question is, you know, if I think we should discuss it more and take it under consideration. I'm just, you know, I would be wondering, you know, it's one thing when a blank, like an empty lot, doesn't have a house on it, I can see commercial going in, I, I I'm not sure how that's going to work with houses already on a lot further down. Not that I'm opposed to it. And then it would be nice to know what could go there or what someone's thinking. Without knowing, I would be you know, tough knowing that it's possibly, you could just put a lot of houses there and not necessarily businesses, so I know it's not uncommon for, for developers to change their minds about what they want to do on a project, so you know, and it's not against the law or whatever, but it would be tough to see approval and then new businesses end up going in there, so, you know. Be nice to see a project. I know that's you know, takes time, and I think it helps to know too what, what could go there and what your thoughts are. I think having it too open, open ended leaves a little bit of question, I'm not saying I can't fathom it, but I think the public would, if the public's voting on it still in the end, probably want to know what, what's going on here and stuff.
Hearing, it seems to me that we probably should refer this to the bylaw subcommittee for some further discussion, review. I guess I'll, I'll say maybe among other things kick this through Albag's brain a little bit. Or what might happen down there.
And I haven't heard a thing, I'm starting to ask a few questions around. Has anybody heard anything about the new post office yet? Nothing?
No.
Let's see, the postmaster had mentioned something, but he needed a new post office because the the rental agreement was running out, but he wanted to make the new post office bigger because Paxton wanted to come in to get their mail from the Rutland Post Office instead of going to Worcester. So to me, that, trust me, after I heard some of the this money, holy crap, it's a wonder the stupid town didn't get their back, didn't they?
I know, you got it all through Washington.
I know, I know, but still, there's other towns that are.
Yeah.
Well, it gets, yeah.
Get involved in that.
Gets cited eventually.
So is, is that a motion to refer it to the
So moved.
Subcommittee for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, let's see, next item. I mean, is a public hearing to consider the amendment to Article 12, Section 89(c). I'm going to open the hearing by reading the.
You gotta read it?
Yeah. Anyway, the Rutland Planning Board will mail the, will hold a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, at the Rutland Public Library, 280 Main Street, Rutland, Mass on Tuesday, January 14th at 6:30 PM to consider amendments to Article 12, Section 89 to amend marijuana establishments regarding restrictions and prohibis, prohib, ah, prohibitions. Let's try it again. This amendment is available for you in the Planning Board and Community Development Office in the Town Hall Annex, 246 Main Street. For more information, contact John Charbonneau, Town Planner. And this was published in the Telegram Gazette on December 30th and January 6th of 2025. And we have a copy of the article as it may be. Is that it, I guess?
Yeah, it's, it's the identical language that appeared in Article 10 of the November 21st Fall Town Meeting.
Okay. So this is okay. I'm just looking at this, this is a copy of something.
The draft warrant, yes.
Previous, okay.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, that's the language from Article 10, you're correct. And this is be, this is what's coming forward at this town meeting for this article.
Yeah, okay, but it's, it's not the actual article because it says.
No, it's not, no.
The 13th day of January.
Correct.
So, uh, okay, start with comments from the board.
What I haven't heard is any discussion what effects this can have on this town as far as to me, it's teenagers or small kids that they might get involved or get, they get more into it or the ability to grab this stuff. And I, I, medical wise, I, I'm concerned, not only that, I feel that we have one and that's enough in this town. I, I just don't know, you know, I just don't want to see this thing keep on pushing and who knows what's going to happen in the future, but there again, I have never heard any kind of medical, you know, people smoking this for any length of time, do they come down with certain diseases or whatever? All I'm hearing is, is how the, you know, the town seems to be pushing this because they want to make money, I guess, I, I don't know what else would be in their favor of it. But to me, for kind of odd, uh, I went with one because of Maryland. And I felt that one would be enough for this town, this situation. And, and that's all other than that. And I would like to see some information about it, and if I don't get it, I will be making a, a motion.
Keith?
Wish more of the board members were here to, because I think this topic's kind of a good discussion for all five of us.
Well, you could always continue the public hearing, we have one more meeting before the special time meeting, we have a meeting on the 28th.
Okay.
So if you want a full board to discuss this, you could always make a motion to continue this public hearing to the 28th for further discussion.
Yeah, um, I, I would refer that to Norm, if anything.
Okay, well, uh.
But I didn't mean.
At the appropriate time.
Yeah, I didn't mean that as an ultimatum for what we're doing. I know the bylaw right now allows for two, it's just based on the alcohol.
Actually, the bylaw right now allows for one.
For one.
Because the town only has, it's, it's a ratio of
Yes.
active liquor licenses, and the town currently has four, now the town has a maximum of eight liquor licenses, so if the town got up to eight, then it would, at 25%, it would trigger it to bump it up to two at that time.
You have to have the eight, okay.
John, if I may, just a clarification, it's off premise liquor.
Off premise, yep, thank you.
Yeah. To me, I wouldn't, it, it doesn't seem unfathomable to think that we would get more licenses for alcohol to, to get to six, you know, if we're at four, if you take a brewery that wants to come in town or another establishment, wouldn't, wouldn't be long to get to six, could you get to eight? Nah, yeah, it would be a lot for that to happen. You know, and I know we're kind of work, we had a gentleman bring a petition to town to extend that so he could potentially open a business, another retail establishment. You know, I'm not opposed to two. It's, um, I'd even consider, you know, going with the original petition and which was a little higher, it was 50%.
Oh, we, we can't do that now?
Yeah, you can't do that, yeah.
Yeah, the original petition would have actually allowed the percentage to be higher in the future.
Yeah.
And would have opened it up, would have increased the ratio to 50% instead of 25.
Yeah. You know, if, if it can't be three, say the number's set to three, you know, I can understand going with two and just calling it quits there. You know, I think the town does need some revenue coming in, so I don't expect these to be high sales kind of stores, even though we'll generate 3% back to the town through taxation, taxation, but I'm not opposed to two, I guess. And it's up to the town ultimately to, to vote on this, so.
I, I have, I have some mixed feelings on it. Obviously, the one, one of the things is looking for the, you know, the Berry-Paxton Road area to see if we can spark some I don't know, I guess I'll call it maybe more modern development, uh, new, new growth out there, that sort of thing. I do have my doubts whether Rutland can really support two of these establishments. I don't know, we have one that's just open there, and I haven't noticed any land office business going, going off as they go by down there. But, uh, I don't know, you know, it's kind of like, if someone wants to invest something you know, in, in the town and bring in a new business and maybe brighten up that corner a little bit, I don't know, I don't, you know, I don't have a real problem with it.
So, two comments on that, Norm, first of all, by, if, if the town does choose to approve this, it simply affords the opportunity for someone to come forward and submit an application, which would still need to go through a public hearing process and receive a special permit from the planning board, it doesn't mean that automatically something can open up there. The second thing is, and I would just, this is just an open ended question, because it's up to the planning board and the town ultimately to vote on this, is if not this establishment, then what establishment does the town expect to come to that area of town? I know Cumberland Farms looked at that four corners, but the traffic isn't, the regular traffic volume isn't enough. So, um, so that's something I, I think people should keep in mind, if, you know, you, you have someone who's interested in opening up a, an establishment there. Do you want to pass that by in the hopes that something else comes up? That's going to be, that's ultimately going to be up to the town.
Anything else from the board?
Where is the closest one? You know, to the, say the four corners?
I don't think the town has one.
Is there one in Leicester?
Doesn't Berry have two?
Berry's in the other direction, I believe.
People still come to Berry Head in this direction.
I also, I don't know.
I'm unfamiliar with that.
No, I know there's one in Leicester.
Well, yeah.
Now, in Paxton, they do not allow it.
Correct. Holden does not.
Holden does not.
A lot of the voters in Rutland chose to allow it.
First Minnesota.
Anyway. Anyway, any comments from the public? Well, go ahead, see.
Elizabeth Hussey, 97, Turquilla Road. I'm not actually here about this issue, and I understand what you, your concerns, but I just wanted to point out that anybody that's going to go to a dispensary in Rutland, if it's not in Rutland, they don't have to go very far. So anybody that wants to buy a cannabis product is going to buy it, it's just that Rutland won't get the tax revenue. Somebody else will. Like, you're not going to prevent people who legally can use it by not putting it in Rutland. I don't have strong feelings either way, but I just wanted to point that out.
Yes. It's not about.
Excuse me, could you please introduce yourself?
Okay, sorry. Kristof Semnaut, New William Circle. Sorry for, you sound like there's already one place to buy cannabis. It is about additional one, possibility of additional ones.
Yes, one.
Just one, yes. But there's already one in Rutland, so. Are they going to steal from each other or compete for the same customers? Maybe, it's probably not the town's call, but.
That's a possibility.
It's a possibility, yeah.
Yes?
Mary Wrestler, Ivy's Hill. This is just for a dispensary license, not for a grower's license?
No, it's, it's a retail, it's not, it's not a grower's license, it's just a retail.
One more question. I was having problems understanding the law, how it is written, how it works with the factions, so currently we have four liquor licenses, so it.
Off premises liquor licenses, so our bylaw currently allows 25% of our active off premises liquor licenses to be, we are allowed to have 25% of those for retail marijuana, so we currently are allowed one and a half one. So the state, the state law says that towns have to allow 20%. So we're actually, we actually meet that, we're a little bit above it. So that's what we currently have now.
But it also means that we, the town would need to get to, if we have five, six, seven, it is still one
Yes.
license for the marijuana, you need to reach the magic number eight
Correct.
liquor licenses to bump to the, to two.
Two, yes.
Okay, thank you for explanation.
Yes?
Jennifer Forleo from 207 Pleasantale, I also did not intend on speaking on this, but I, I'm kind of interested on two things, first thing I want to say though is that if we already have one, it's a small town, there's lots of them around, I know it doesn't seem like there's a lot around, there are, and people tend to go to their favorite ones, um, which, there's a ton in Worcester, like, it's really not that far of a drive to, to go there. So I think adding a second one is going to take away customers from the one that we already have, and I feel like maybe if we just put that off a little bit, see how this one does before we start taking customers away. And then secondly, we brought up Berry-Paxton Road, I'm curious as to why that was brought up as a potential place when there hasn't been anything that's been notified, so I'm curious as to why we're talking about Berry-Paxton Road as far as. So I'm curious as to why we're talking about Barry Paxton Road as far as a dispensary.
Because that's, that's the site that this individual who originally brought forward a citizen's petition article, um, that's, that's an area where he's looking to potentially establish this business.
Okay, so should that be included in this information when it's going out?
No. Because that's really, it's.
It's more generic.
It's more generic, it's, it doesn't get into that level of detail. Because this, this gentleman may not bring an application forward if this passes. That's a possibility, because I think someone said developers change their minds. So, um, this just allows for the opportunity. And there are, there are other areas in town where this could potentially go. This gentleman would just be interested in Barry Paxton Road. But that's not the only area in town with this, where this could potentially be located. Yes?
Janet Brothers, five Cedar Ave. I have a question, though. How much revenue are we expecting these to bring in and what is the taxation coming back to the city in town, or town?
It's three percent, correct?
Well. The, the thing is, it.
I know it's just established.
This new establishment.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's, that is just open, that's a new building. They pay real estate tax.
Yes, they do.
You know, as well as.
Yeah, I understand that, I just didn't know it's three percent, that was my.
Yeah, I believe it's three percent, plus whatever real estate taxes for a new building.
Of gross sales?
I believe so, yeah.
And I have absolutely no idea what they would have for sales.
I would, no, I'm just curious to see how much money it would create for the town, that's all.
Yeah, we, we, well, they, they haven't been open long enough, so we don't have any, we don't have any.
Obviously, that would fluctuate.
Yeah, I'm sure it would.
I know you were a math teacher, right? I was, um. Yeah, at a hundred thou, if, if this, if this math is correct, at a hundred thousand gross sales, three percent is three thousand, so.
Annually, yeah.
Give you an idea. It's hard to say if they break that or, or beat that or somewhere in between, you know.
Is three percent the standard rate or is that just the Rutland rate? That is the.
No, I guess that's a state regulation.
Okay, that's what I was curious to where it came from, okay.
James Inliano, Susie Drive. So is it, uh, correct to say the only reason the planning board is considering this is because somebody has shown an interest in a particular parcel in getting the zone changed of his parcel to allow this? Or not the zone, but the, the marijuana law changed because somebody wanted to do it. It wasn't an idea the planning board had before.
No, correct, no.
Okay, and we've already voted this down at town meeting in the fall. And now we're being asked to come again and vote in February. I'm opposed to that. I think that's totally wrong to take the vote of the voters and, and put it before the voters again in the middle of the winter, not at a standard town meeting.
Anyone else? Anyone who might be, uh, joining us remotely? No?
I'm just one off mute.
Hands raised or anything, so?
Hope.
Well, the applicant didn't come tonight, could have.
This technically is not a citizen's petition anymore, so.
Proposed applicant.
Well, then I think, uh, maybe your motion would be appropriate at this time.
Do you want to continue it to get five people involved?
It's up to you if you want to make a motion, Keith, go ahead.
Yeah, I can make that motion, motion to continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing, yes, to, March twenty fifth. Till March twenty fifth, will I make a motion to continue this hearing?
Um.
Too far out?
That doesn't, that doesn't.
No, we. January twenty eighth is our next meeting.
March twenty fifth.
Some kind of guy.
Well, actually, Keith was in the middle of making a motion, so.
The reason why I was doing it, that's why I told you.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I, there's some sort of weird timetable going on here.
Well, no, there's gonna be, there's, yeah.
I'm not sure what's appropriate.
Are you gonna get a, you know, you're gonna get a majority of the planning board?
At the next meeting.
At the next beating.
You know, it'd been nice if they were here tonight, you know, they can't make it, but. Did you want to vote on it tonight, if not?
No, I want to come back from my trip. And be involved, that's why I did it, as such.
Oh, you're gonna go away, I don't know.
If I may, just for a frame of reference, uh, so Thursday night, the finance committee and the select board are meeting to make their recommendations. Um, I know they were hoping to have the planning board recommendation to help guide theirs. Um, but at the very least, they are gonna be most likely issuing their recommendation on Thursday evening. The planning board could go as far as not making their recommendation until the night of special town meeting. But I don't know if, if, at that point, it would not be printed on the warrant, that's just gonna be.
Wow, wow, wow. The town meeting is scheduled for February.
Six.
I have no idea.
So the pleasure of the board.
You're going away.
My recommendation would be to continue it to the twenty eighth. And potentially take action with the two of the members here, but that's up to you guys.
I don't know, I, I don't see much of a choice but to just go to the twenty eighth.
Okay. We know where your stance is, but.
You're making a motion?
I am finished, so I don't know if it's official.
Yeah, to continue the public hearing to January twenty eighth at six thirty P M.
You okay with that?
But that's okay, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, we'll make a motion to continue it to January twenty eighth in hopes of getting a full board to discuss this.
Do I have a second?
Interesting chessboard.
You can second.
Yes, you can.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Motion passes, continue to the twenty eighth.
Okay. Okay.
So hold on a second, Norm, if I can.
Yep.
Control room, could you please get ready to share your screen with the plans for two seventeen Barry Paxton Road?
Okay, next up, we have another public hearing on the position, addition of the applicant of Howe's Country Market. On behalf of the owner, Ken LaBelle, for site plan review pursuant to the Rutland zoning bylaws article three, uh, section ten A for retail business at two seventeen Barry Paxton Road. And I guess, if my voice holds out, um.
Would you like me to read the legal notes?
Please, please.
The Rutland Planning Board will hold a public hearing at the Rutland Public Library, two eighty Main Street, Rutland, Mass. On Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at six thirty P M. On the petition of the applicant, Howe's Country Market, on behalf of the owner, Ken LaBelle, for site plan review approval pursuant to the Rutland zoning bylaws article three, section ten A B three A, for retail business at the property located at, identified as two seventeen Barry Paxton Road. The property is also identified as parcel zero one three dash A dash two and is located in the Village Center V C zoning district. For more information on the application, please contact the planning office at five oh eight 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 six forty one hundred, extension three zero zero one. Nominated as the chair, chairman, Rutland Planning Board, advertised in the Worcester Townogram Gazette on December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and January sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Do we have the applicant here? Yes. You care to give just some sort of an.
My name.
Idea?
Haley Howe, one sixty-five Pleasantale Road. We, we plan on doing a seasonal market where we have, have flowers, local produce, local goods, Christmas trees, pumpkins. Just on that corner.
I don't know, I guess also, uh, my, my only question would be, what, what portion of the year would you expect to be, be holding the business?
So during COVID, our location on the Holden Rutland line really took off. So we were thinking of continuing that year round where in the winter months, we would just close our hours down during daylight.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Other than, uh, how can we protect the line of sight, number one, of traffic? With, uh, them trying to sell their product in front of their building that they're leasing? And I have another little doozy forum that's coming down the pike sometime. When I was on central mass regional planning, there's gonna be a roundabout put there. And how much land is it gonna take? Will it take all the frontage off of that existing building? And they put it in, who knows? Just to give you a heads up, what's coming in the future.
We're aware of that.
Very good.
Julian, this was your plan, what are the big, um, lines that come out into the roadway? What are those design?
This is actually your pavement.
Okay, that's what that is. Okay, so that's a buffer?
Yeah, there's a right of way, the dock line is a property, and which is a right of way, so.
So that shows that they're about ten feet off the road, all that stuff, yeah, okay.
So that's, so when the roundabout comes in, depending on the size of it.
It might fit right inside.
Dick's point is, well, it may, it may take some of that, don't know.
But for siding, or, yeah, and if the applicant wants to mention anything. But that's technically a ten-foot buffer or side, uh, line of sight that, hmm, that is in play now or is gonna be in play in the future and if you want.
Displays on that corner would.
Mark, introduce yourself.
Mark forty-three Barry Paxton Road.
Yep.
Our co-owner. Uh, display that's on that corner would go no higher than the existing yellow barrels that are there and would be on the inside, away from the road. We're aware of the embroidery that's going in the works with the state. Most of our display is into the field to the left of the property, so that honestly wouldn't affect us much anyways. Um, the only thing that might affect down the road that we might have to revisit is handicap parking.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Any questions, comments from the public?
Control room, could you stop sharing so we could see if somebody raises their hand to have a question, please?
Yes?
I know it was very difficult.
Excuse me, could you introduce yourself, man?
Mary Wrestler, five East Hill. Um, it was really difficult this fall pulling out from Pleasantale. Um, a lot of the line of sight was blocked by all the cars parking along one twenty-two. And I can't picture where they're gonna put all those cars and not block the line of sight. The other thing is, um, how does twenty-one E affect any of this? And the cesspools and the dug well? Are they gonna be washing fruits and vegetables with wa, that water? You know, has any of that been discussed? And the contamination from twenty-one E?
Yeah, good point. So all of our product comes in pre-washed, pre-wrapped and ready to go. Uh, we don't, we will not be using, utilizing any water on the site. Um, bathrooms are off-site. There are no sinks on the site.
Well, there's a bathroom in the building.
No.
No, there is.
There will be, there will be.
There is a bathroom in that building.
Not anymore.
There is not, there is not a bathroom.
Did you rip it out?
There has not been a bathroom in that building in almost twelve years. And that we are only occupying the red building.
Okay, not the house.
Correct.
This petition is just for the red building in front, it's got nothing to do with the garage, the house, this is just the red building.
And what about watering plants and materials?
That is all outdoor watering from the well.
Right, the, the dug wells that are with the cesspools and the contaminated twenty-one E ground.
Yep. Which would have no bearing on our flowers.
Anything else from the public?
Jen Forleo from two zero seven Pleasantale Road. Um, I have a bunch of concerns. I was here before when we were doing the food truck at the corner, um, so I'm just gonna save my piece. I know that it's gonna get approved anyway, but I'm just gonna put it out there because I would feel bad if I didn't. So this business has been open for months. So why is it just coming about now? Out of curiosity. It's been open since the fall. So why is we, why are we just getting a notice now? Why hasn't this been brought, I don't, before they opened, isn't that tradition?
It was.
It was, we were first notified that they were open, I think, back in August, late August. And so I did a site visit with the building commissioner because my department and this board doesn't have any enforcement capability, uh, to, so we visited with the, um, with the applicant and the applicant was given a timeframe to submit an application, um, which was about a month. Um, I went on vacation during this time, when I came back, um, I reconnected with the applicant, who let me know that he was working on a site plan, um, with his engineer. And it took some time to get the site plan together, but, um, the building commissioner decided to allow them a little bit of time to get the application in without shutting them down because, um, he wanted to be, you know, sensitive to actually, you know, he didn't want to discourage business. So, um, basically, the site plan was submitted and it is before the board tonight.
So, okay, so going back to that, so now this is a couple of months that it took for them to come up with a site plan that on the site plan itself says it's already, it's the same thing. It's, it's the same as is, as was, so it really shouldn't have taken three months or four months or five months to come up with a site plan. It really wasn't different, so there's something else that went on with that. Um, on the site plan itself, there is something labeled as a driveway towards the back that is not a driveway. It is parking for school buses. It is completely blocked throughout most of the day, that is not a driveway. Um, the visibility is crazy. I've lived at that intersection for the majority of my life. I am terrified to leave my street because I know that if I stop at the stop line at Pleasantale, I'm not gonna see anything. I have to pull out, almost into traffic, in order to see down that way. And with things that are hanging, trees that are up against a fence, you have to pull out even further. So if we want to talk about why there's so many accidents, this is not helping. And I understand it is zoned for business, but it is not safe. It is not safe. And when we had the food truck and in the fall when this was open, we had plenty of cars that were parking on the side of one twenty-two that were not in the parking spots that were supposedly there. When I asked about why they are allowed to park there, they're not. But who was actually in charge of making sure that the cars weren't parked there? Because I was asking the police and they said, well, we can just ask them to move their cars. So there needs to be some accountability, if we're not gonna allow parking along that street, then there needs to be very strict parking spots where people are allowed to park so that they're not bl, blocking the sight line. And there needs to be accountability from someone. It can't be a resident that's saying, hey, I can't see down the street. There has to be accountability because they park on that street regardless. Doesn't matter what anybody says, there was never any labels about parking spots, there was never any labels about en, entering and exit. So I'm not sure if it's that they're gonna be accountable for it or the property owner, but I can tell you the property owner was not accountable for it last time. They weren't.
That's not phase three. Down a plantation street. It's their responsibility.
But we can't keep passing the buck to everybody else because it's not my responsibility, but there I am asking people to move.
It's their responsibility.
Okay, so who's gonna make them aware that they have to enforce that?
You could.
It's not my job. I am a resident, there are people who have these jobs for a reason, it's not my job, it's not my job. I am a resident. There are people who have these jobs for a reason. It's not my job. It's not my job. Um. So there needs to be some accountability because this is out of control. And I, listen, I have a job. I have a regular job that I go to every single day. It's not my job to make sure that everybody else is following their rules, okay? But this is, I have nothing against them. I'm sorry. I don't care if you open a business there. I just actually want it to be safe to actually happen. You're gonna approve it anyway, but I honestly would like for there to be some actual truthfulness in the plan that there is not a secondary driveway. It is parking. It's always been parking for buses. It has been parking for buses for years. That doesn't exist. The parking spots that are labeled, that seems like it would work, but there means that they cannot park on the side of the street. They can't. There cannot be any sort of display on the side of the street. People are getting in accidents and they are getting very, very hurt, and that is a very large problem. Are we gonna fix the roads? No. That's not, I get that. That's not your job either, okay? But there has to be something that is obvious and done.
So, um, if you pull up that diagram, parking is very well drawn out, and there actually is two driveways. The driveway for the school bus is not the second driveway that's being drawn out in that diagram. There is an entrance from one twenty-two and between the red building and the garage, there is an exit, which is not allowed to be blocked.
Right, I understand that, but there's also a very large driveway on that plan towards the back.
None of that is, so the only part of this plan that has anything to do with this is the front.
I understand that, but on the plan itself, there's a very large open area that's labeled as a driveway. It's not actually a driveway.
Not gonna be used. You can still drive around it.
That's, that's not part of ours. That's just.
Right, but it's on that plan. So that's what I'm just addressing.
It has to be.
Let me, let me start them first again.
Thank you, Julian.
So, we start from here. This is the boundary. They have to stay within. They can't use this for, to obstruct. So there's something low. Right now, there's barrels or whatever. Yeah, I think the state put some barrels out here a while ago, but this cannot be obstructed and they understand that. They're not showing being using this. They're showing on this side of the line, an outdoor display area. These five parking spots, a drive-in which exists and a way out. All this is just existing what's there. When we were out there doing the survey, I don't think the school buses were there, but this was all gravel. So it is a driveway. There, I believe the school buses are parking over here.
No, they're driving.
We weren't working on that. We're working on this. This is always before the board. So, we're not, this is a landscaped area. They, their boundary is here. If they do anything in this, they'd be in a violation of whatever permit they're getting. If there's a car parked there, call the police. That's all I can say.
Oh, well.
That's all you can do.
Um, so, and then my question is, are five spots gonna be enough and is the entrance and exit going to be labeled? So that people know they can only enter in one side and exit the other side. Cause that was also promised in the last plan, which wasn't that, but that was never followed through either. And the parking was also supposed to be labeled and that was never followed through with.
Parking's labeled here. People are coming from Pleasantale Road. They're gonna come in on that one. If they're coming off of one twenty-two, they're gonna come in on that one. And hopefully, we all have our driver's licenses and can work with each other as we're entering and and departing this property.
Mary, five East Hill Road. Will there be designated truck delivery areas? Because some of the large trucks really block the view also, and they would take up quite a bit of the five parking lots, parking spots.
Yes. So our bu- our trucks will, our truck deliveries pull in in between the garage and the back of the building. Back there, um, which wouldn't, which won't affect view at all. Um, we get one delivery a week from larger trucks. Everything else is vans and small stuff, so that, that. Um, in terms of parking spaces, those will be labeled out. Um, the game plan, yes, is to have an enter on one twenty-two and exit onto Pleasantale sign.
That would be great.
That is the game plan. I've spoken extensively with the planning board about that for safety sake to.
Thank you.
We don't want people exiting onto one twenty-two because we do feel that's dangerous.
Thank you.
Um, I also have lived on Barry Paxton my entire life, so, um. But yes, the, most of our deliveries also come in before hours. Um, we open usually at nine and close at five, so we're out before rush hour and all that as well.
Jean Cicliano Susi Drive. Is there going to be notes on that map that it, where the exit and the entrances are? And that that has to be followed, or if they're not followed, is there someone authority figure in the town that goes out and enforces it? Like the building inspector, wh- who does that?
Just being a special permit, we can.
No, it's not a special permit, site plan approval.
Just site plan. And we use it as a condition.
Yes, we can.
Yep, there you go.
So can you put that on there as a condition? Then can there also be a condition that there be no parking signs on one twenty-two? And then if someone parks there, the police have a right to give them a ticket. But if there's no sign, they can't ticket them.
That's messed up.
We don't have the authority to do that.
It's a state road.
It's a state road. I can't put up no parking.
Right.
I'm a, I'm all for it.
No, 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 I know, I know, but, and I know you don't own, I get that you're just renting. There's the fence. Can we try to get the signs on the fence just that says no parking? I know that you don't control that.
Legally binding. I- if it's not done by the state, it's not legally binding and we can't enforce it.
So can we refer this to the state?
I think the state should be notified and it's a state highway and there should be no parking on it.
Can we refer this to the state as part of the plan to say, can you review this?
If, if you wanna wait six to nine months.
Yes, I do.
I'm gonna go down to Plantation Street, go up to their brand new place, walk right in and tell them you wanna speak to the director.
It's crazy.
And they're very receptive in there, I have to say.
I mean, if they're gonna redevelop the area, it's possible that they'll take a lot of consideration of what's going on in this lot, on this corner. And.
I would say our best chance of that is when the state proposes its plans for a roundabout in this area. And that's a comment the town should make.
How far out is that, do you know?
Good question.
Just before I left, they were saying it could be anywhere from four to seven years.
I think I read twenty-seven is when it's supposed to be brought up at the next meeting.
They already went from three to three points, seven million dollars on it, so. And just to let you know, your town DPW director wants to do it for two hundred dollars and put in four stop signs. I love it. Just give the rest of the money to the town.
Good for him.
Maybe we'll get some new roads.
Is there anything in the zoning that says a size of a certain business has to have a certain number of parking spaces, or is that not part of the zoning?
Rutland does not have parking regulations like that.
So just the judgment of the planning board that five is enough or whatever is on there.
Correct.
And I just have one other question. I looked for, um, the packets for the public hearing. And they're not posted online. The last.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, they are.
Is March twenty-seventh.
I post them online.
I was guessing.
Yeah, other people found the packets online.
I did have a hard time following. I did have a hard time finding them.
Packet for this meeting, like the agenda packet, but I didn't find the public hearing packet.
That's all in there. It goes in order, the agenda, everything. I s- when I put a packet together for everything, I scan it all in and that's what's posted online. It is part of the overall packet.
So there's no longer gonna be just a public hearing packet?
Correct. It's all part of the regular packet.
Okay, and when I did look at that, I didn't see this, that's all. Maybe it's there.
Oh, I'm sure it's there.
Okay, yes.
Carol Benoit Turkey Hill, um, nothing necessarily to do with this, except that I was listening to a meeting that we were going to go after. The town was gonna go after the property owners to clean up the site. Is that, who, who does, whose committee does that sit with?
Sitting with the building inspector.
Hmm, yeah.
Enforcement officer.
And I'm just wondering.
Or the board of health. It could be the board of health.
We're kinda like going, here, take rent and and prosper, and yet they've been in violation for, I don't know.
Again, that's, but that's, I don't believe the town can force a private property owner to, to do that. That's also, they have a mass DEP file number. Mass DEP monitors that.
And they've been found that they don't have the funds to do it several times over, so that's why it had, nothing's been done with it.
It's been years. Many years, many.
Sorry, I got, I did find it, John. Thanks. It just wasn't in the order. Um. Are we gonna be selling, uh, vegetables for people to plant in their gardens, like flats?
That is the plan, yes.
And we're gonna water it with contaminated water?
Yes.
Is that something we're allowing?
Board of Health?
That'll be something we can deal with, the Board of Health. If we can't sell produce plants, that's not the end of the world. We don't sell them.
Yeah, I think there would be Board of Health. They regulate wells.
They don't regulate what you sell, do they?
Yes, they do.
They now test your water and make sure it's commercially safe.
Anyone else?
Two fourteen Pleasantale Road, uh, to add to this, on Pleasantale, there used to be a speed limit sign coming into its one twenty-two that was twenty-five miles an hour. That went away about nine years ago and no one replaced it. The traffic there is unbelievable. I mean, I'll just say that. Plus, when you have the trucks going through there, the jake brakes are all, used all the time when they go on the construction sites, wherever they're coming. Out of Bond down there, but the traffic there, a lot of people don't say it, but it's very, very busy there, a lot of trucks. But that twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign, I was dressed with the police. They passed me on to the Department of Public Works. They said nothing. It's helps, I mean, they just fly up and down that road.
Again, that's a state, that's a state road.
Pleasantale.
I thought one twenty-two, yeah.
Leave it to everybody and everybody says it's somebody else's job, so just.
You talking about Pleasantale Road?
Pleasantale.
Yeah, the bottom half.
On, on the screen, there is the chair of the select board. She's on there beneath this map.
Well, I mean, I just don't understand why it just, it was knocked down and never replaced. Twenty-five miles an hour, no one provides by that at all.
Yeah, to order a new sign.
Here are some, John, we can't see them, but there's some folks on Zoom that wanna speak.
Okay, so can you, can you take down the plans, please? Now, thank you for putting them back up.
Could anybody from the public, uh, remotely here?
Yes, Stephen Pacaro, two eleven Barry Paxton Road. I just wanted to comment on the, and I know evidently that this board. Roll over it. Can you hear me?
It's a woman in the corner there that, that nobody has their hands up. So, they all know how to put their hands up.
That's out of, that's out of our control.
No, we don't.
I, I had it up, but it's on the air, so I took it down.
You're muted.
You're muted. Still muted.
Oh, okay, I got it.
All right, we're having trouble with our volume.
It's, it's probably us that can't.
Control room, this, we're having trouble with our volume.
I'm trying to get them to hear us.
Yeah, it's not broadcasting here.
We're trying to talk, but they can't hear us, so I'm trying.
No, Leah, we can't hear you.
We can't hear anybody.
Oh, that's great.
Turn the volume up in the other room.
Yeah, really. Let's put that doorway back in where it was.
John's gonna go see.
Hang on. Dragging the speaker and long cable, yes? Long wire. She's got her hand up.
Yes, we can't hear her.
If you put it on Zoom and you can hear me and you wanna speak, put your hand up. I think there's an emoji down at the bottom somewhere, um, to do it, and that way they'll think you wanna, you wanna talk.
Get the, get the plan and see if we can get a, a plan that shows.
No.
We're trying.
That was.
Somebody must be in the meeting. I can play the volume for here. I have it.
Okay, all right.
Is it the speakers that's turning off?
Okay, we can, okay, we can, we can, we can hear you now, hear you now. I, I don't know. I can't do it.
Yeah, is there no speaker in here? Is that why?
Use the phone as the speaker, only not the mic.
It's, it wasn't turned on as a microphone. It's because this is turned on as a microphone. If we're out, Ryan, 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 we could probably hear him.
There's obviously multiple speakers on. There's obviously multiple speakers on.
It's obvious we can't talk.
Yeah, somebody's gotta go first, though.
All right, Stephen, go. Stephen, go ahead and speak.
All right, this is Stephen Pacaro again. Two eleven Barry Paxton Road. Can you hear me? Somebody say something?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. Um, I just had a comment on the, the appearance of that lot. It is messy and apparently the planning board doesn't do anything about it, but can it be referred to whoever needs to take care of it? We live right next door to it.
Let's see, at this point, it's not planning board responsibility. It's not planning board responsibility, but we can condition something in this plan.
It's, I suppose we could put, I don't know, I, I don't know if we can. We can't really force, for example, the zoning enforcement officer to do anything.
And whose responsibility is it?
Well, this would be, on the site plan review, the board can condition some landscaping. If you so choose to.
Thank you, Steve.
You referring to cars?
John, I saw you speaking, but we can't hear you.
Steve, I couldn't hear me either, but I can hear you.
We recount.
No, no, not cars, landscaping.
No, I know, but there's like.
All right, this is not working.
No, this is not.
Okay.
Sorry, but.
We're gonna have to continue. I think we're gonna have to continue this public hearing.
I think so. I think that'll. I don't understand what's happening with all of that.
So at this point, I think might be time to continue this to the twenty-eighth because we can't hear comments from the public over Zoom.
Right.
It's not fair to them.
And I, and I, I think there's been some some, some, some worthwhile, uh, discussion here. And, and, I don't know, my own personal thing, I realize this Barry Paxton Road, Pleasantale Road intersection is very busy. Particularly the one twenty-two A, uh, the one twenty-two side of it is high speed. Uh, and, uh, I, I don't know, I guess my, my biggest thing would be taking a very hard look at the line of sight. Uh, and I guess particularly in any, any displays that would be put out. Uh, I don't know. I'm, I'm almost thinking I'd like, I'd like to go over and look at you know, where. you know, where anything would be set up in relation to the roadside.
Stand there and look at it.
Yeah, literally stand there and look at it.
Mary five East Hill, um, especially if they're gonna have displays where there'd be a barrier between the display and the road, so somebody doesn't inadvertently step too close to the road, you know, um. There's not a lot of space there, so I can picture somebody going around a flower dispres- display and
There's a fence there, isn't there?
There's a fence and all of our displays are on the other, would be on the other side of the boughs, because the state was already set up.
Okay.
Preventative, keep it from wandering.
Okay.
Joe Wrestler, five East Hill. How do you go about getting the speed limit reduced on that road?
On one twenty-two?
It's fifty miles an hour.
Yeah.
When you hit the Paxton line, the same road is forty miles an hour. Fifty miles an hour through that intersection is
It would have to be petitioned through the, it would have to be petitioned through the state. It's a state road. The town has no jurisdiction to change that.
So that would be another four to seven years. Three hundred accidents.
So then who, sorry, and this is totally unrelated and I'm interrupting, I'm sorry. But so who do we go to in the town of Rutland for at least a speed limit sign on Pleasantdale? To at least get that put up there?
I mean, not just speed limit signs. They could do things on Pleasantdale to slow traffic, like rumble strips, like they've done in Hoppus and stuff.
Oh, let's, let's, let's not get into that. That's a whole different story, please.
Change your intersections.
Just so we're talking speed limit signs.
And talk to him.
Who?
Chris.
Who's Chris?
He's the DPW Director.
Okay, thank you. I don't.
Can I, can I chime in for a moment?
Yes.
Um, so my name's Tameek. I work in the Town Administrator's Office and for the Select Board. So the process is, there's a form that you can get at the DPW and then it goes through an internal process. So they get the recommendation of the police chief, uh, the fire chief and the DPW Director. Once they've all submitted their information, they then submit it to the Select Board and it comes before them at a public meeting for discussion. We actually had a few, I wanna say maybe two or three months ago, that the Select Board had reviewed, so that would be the place to start, is DPW.
Even if it already existed, it just got knocked down and never got put back up? Okay.
That, that's the, yeah.
Years ago. Three to seven business years.
Who do you talk to on the state road right before the intersection is where they have the fifty mile an hour speed limit sign? Instead of after?
That's DOT.
That's DOT, okay, okay.
You know, if they knock it down, they won't put it back up.
I don't know, that might just be the
You know, if they're gonna put a rotary there, your speed, speeds are gonna come down. You can't drive fifty miles an hour into a rotary.
But we can't wait six, seven years to do it.
You know, they're proposing to three point seven million dollars, so in four years, it'll be four point five. I mean, they're gonna pull the money from somewhere, you know, the magic wand. It's nice that they're even proposing this, so I mean, I know it's fun to joke about it. Someday it'll get fixed, you know, if, if there, if it's even become before the board, someone submitted it. I don't know if we did originally, but it's, maybe it's the high accident volume. It, there's a couple other factors that, that get brought before that committee. And it's nice that they even took it on, you know, um, it's a big project. It's gonna be like in Holden where they're putting the rotary in over by Mountview, um, so someday, something.
That's not fifty miles an hour through Mountview either.
No, and you can't, like I said, they're gonna have, you're gonna reduce speed. You're gonna see traffic change over there and, and, you know, we're hoping it comes eventually. I, I know there's a delay with that, but.
Out of our hands.
Yeah, but it's, it's there, so at least the speed complaint, it, it's gonna get addressed. It may change the ability for them to operate a safer business close to an edge of the road too, you know.
Gotta put a bridge over the canal soon too.
That could happen. That could happen.
At this point.
I'll try to make a, a call and go down myself and talk to them. See what I can come up with and while I'm there, I'll talk to Central Mass Regional and, and.
There's, there's so many entrances and exits right there. You know, there's at least a half a dozen entrance and exit points there. It can't be fifty miles an hour.
Right, that should easily be forty. I'll go down and have a talk.
He used to be on that DOT Transportation Committee, so you've got someone in your corner, you know.
Okay, I think, uh.
I'll do a motion to continue, um, this public hearing or site plan review, I should say.
For to January twenty-eighth at six thirty.
For January twenty-eighth at six thirty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry for the way we're hand up.
So hopefully the connection will be better in two weeks.
Yeah, hopefully.
Okay.
Do you wanna do any site walk? Stuff?
I kinda, I kinda think we should.
Okay, so do you want to set up a site walk before that meeting? At say six PM?
It'll be dark.
It's dark.
Yeah. When can people, see, that's the thing, without a full board here.
Yeah.
I would recommend that we discuss that when we have Tim and Burton here.
I was gonna say, discuss the site walk at the next meeting. Yeah.
They have two of the toughest schedules.
Okay. Let's see, next. Okay, next, consideration of open space design subdivision for the property located off of Welchav and Emory Road. We have had a conceptual submission uh, for both a standard subdivision and an open space plan. Um, we conducted a site walk uh, of the area on.
Oh, what day was that? Don't know.
It was a nice Saturday.
It was December. Twelve twenty-one, eleven o'clock.
And heard various comments from butters to the property, uh, and, and so forth. And, and I guess at this point, uh, our charge is to uh, express the board's preference for the standard subdivision plan or
The open space design.
The open space plan. Uh, it's not a decision, it's not an approval
It's not binding.
or a denial of either one. It, it, it's simply, I guess we'll call it, uh, our opinion of which one field is the better of the two plans. Um, that's all it is. And, uh, once again, it'll be nice if we had the whole board here. Uh, but I guess I'm just gonna, I'm gonna poll the board, not, not a formal vote. I don't think it calls for a formal vote as to which design each of us feels is better. So.
Open.
Open space.
Yeah.
Um, at the moment, conceptual, with no discussion bringing me one way or another.
So, no favor?
Con- conceptual subdivision, I should say.
The open space?
You mean conventional?
Conventional, whatever it is.
So you prefer the conventional?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I definitely prefer the open space, uh, I think. Particularly when, when, when I look at the Welchav entrance.
Yes.
Uh, that, that kind of makes things kind of messy. I, I guess the, the biggest thing is you know, I, I, I remember when we created the open space bylaw. Uh, and the purpose of that was three things. Number one, to help preserve open space, which in this case, a third of the property will be preserved forever a- as open space. Number two, to reverse, to, uh, reduce the amount of infrastructure. And this open space design cuts the roadway length by probably two thirds. And to reduce impervious surfaces to, to allow for better, you know, drainage runoff, uh, of stormwater and that sort of thing. And certainly that open space plan does that. And that was the purpose of that bylaw. So, um, that, that's why I just have to, I have to favor that one.
It's been with this town, I'm gonna say twenty-five, close to twenty-five years now.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to think, since we adopted it, have we approved a standard conventional plan? I don't think so.
No, we have not.
So the open space has always been preferable?
Yes.
Yeah.
So there you have it.
So. So that's the incentive
Yep.
of that one.
So that's the, that's it.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next.
We do have a question that I submitted a
Nah, we can't talk about that.
Why?
That's not on the table tonight.
I asked the board a question on this particular property. A Form A was submitted for A and R. And I wasn't, I submitted two of them last week. One came before the board and the other one didn't. I'm just asking procedure, what's happening for myself for the future.
I reached out to Town Council today.
Okay, but one went on, one didn't. I just
Well, they're two different properties, so, um, so.
They're both, no approval required plans, so I'd like
That's again, that's Julian, that's a procedural thing. Um, I reached out to Town Council about, about this property.
I know the procedure and this board knows the procedure. I'm not arguing, I'm not talking to the board, through the chair, to, to norm. I just would like some clarification on myself, on my company and any other engineering survey company. When we have a Form A, we submit it to the town clerk.
We changed that.
And
I explained it to you.
And you have it in your hand, so you have it.
Yep.
And the clock, I, I asked for a receipt to get the clock rolling and I was told no.
The, no, 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 Julian.
I don't have a receipt and you have my law.
No, no, no. The A and R you came in about was different property and that could act it on tonight. That was ready to go forward. The other one was not because it's not a simple A and R.
It's a very simple A and R.
No.
It's a no approval product.
It wasn't on the agenda tonight. It's go, I've reached out to Town Council for their guidance to make sure we have the process right. That's it.
No, I submitted, I just wanna know a clarification. We've done this many, many times and it was just I have to explain to my clients what's going on and I don't know what happened there.
Your client was in last Thursday and we discussed this.
But it's still not on the board here, so.
No, it's not.
And it should have been, but you have twenty-one days from when we brought it to your office, so I'd like to be on the next meeting for an A and R for this board, because I don't know who else to speak to, because when I talked to you, you just said no.
No, but I explained to you what's going on, Julian, exactly.
You explained it.
But you, but Julian, you don't seem to accept my explanation, so I don't know what else to tell you.
The law, it's a Form A, no approval required means it goes before the board.
No, it has, it has special permanent state lots on it as well, so.
Has parcels of land on it.
So.
This is what I'm trying, so I'm hoping to get some answer from the board on behalf of my client, that when is that A and R gonna be heard, because it's, it's a use of that property that he would, Mr. Harity would like to have accepted. It doesn't mean, he's not gonna go change something else again, but right now in the, in the game, he needs an A and R, because we all know what A and R means. It's, it's an approval not required and it gives it a use of the property. And
Why does that, why not get an answer from Town Council?
It also, it also has the state lots on, which we've done many, 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 many.
All right, uh, this is not on, this is not on, Julian, this is not on, this is not on the agenda.
State statute says I either submit it to the planning board or to the town clerk. And all I ask for is
No, our subdivision rules and regulations, it comes to me. That got changed. Look at our subdivision rules and regulations.
Okay, so I'm just going by A and R state statute.
Well, our, our bylaws trump that.
So you have the control of time. You can hold on to that for two weeks, three weeks or a month.
It comes to me to make sure that applications are complete and ready to go before the board. That's the way it goes.
Well.
Because it hasn't been done that way in the past and most of the applications I get are missing. Julian, let me finish.
You will.
You also submitted a special permit application directly to the town clerk that was missing half the information it needed. That's why I'm here, to make sure that stuff goes before the board is complete.
That's fine, special permit, you got me. A and R, there's twenty-one days from
This is not a simple A and R, Julian.
It's a simple A and R, it's a plan.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
No, I'm, it's through the chair. I don't wanna talk to the town clerk. I wanna talk to you.
That, that, that will be finally decided by Town Council.
So every A and R now has to go before Town Council?
No.
That's all I'm asking. Why is Mr. Harity singled out?
He's not singled out.
Absolutely. You know how many A and Rs I've done with special permit required state lots? I'll bring them in next time.
Doesn't matter.
It does matter. It absolutely matters.
I, I am not bound to pass practice. I'm gonna do what's right.
I'm not either. I'm going by state statute and you're, you're, you're stopping the clock. You're the first person who has ever stopped the clock.
I'm sorry.
You have twenty-one days. Well, it's wrong, so if there's repercussions, it's because of you.
That's your opinion.
It's not my opinion. I went to the town clerk and she says, I'm not allowed. I'm like, really?
I made these changes with the approval of the town clerk.
I don't know if I've ever heard that before.
Well, I'm sorry you haven't heard that before.
That's, has that ever happened before, talking through the, through the chair?
I think, I think.
So A and R, we're okay. As long as we're on the next, the next meeting, then we're okay.
Well, we'll see.
And we're not presenting any more else than that A and R to establish new property lines on a piece of property. And the ones that are in question are not buildable lots until a special permit is given. We understand that.
I, I, you know, I, look, I've been all, I've been through all of this probably as many times as you have.
Probably more.
So your simple A and R plan has conditions on it and legally you can't condition an A and R plan. That's what I'm clarifying with Town Council. So your plan is not a simple A and R because it has conditions on it and legally, no planning board is legally allowed to put any conditions on an A and R.
Oh, you guys have been doing this job a lot, pretty long, long for a long time.
Possibly. That's not, that's not our criticism of the board, but yes, things, things may not have been, been done properly here for a long time.
I'm speaking through the chair. Why are you talking? Seriously.
Because I'm the gatekeeper for this board.
No, you're not. You seem to be the guy in control of everything and that's not the truth. This is the board.
I go by the regulations.
I wish you did. And then the way you treat the public is also another, will I get into that? I'll get into that. We are the public.
I don't appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
End, end, end it.
End, fine.
I do think number one, yes, this is the, you know, we've had a change as far as submission of these things. Which in general, I do like the idea. Because yes, many times we get applications that would not be complete. You know, a lot of back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. What I'm not clear totally, I'm ninety percent, but not totally clear. And again, so I think this is something that I would like to bring to Town Council. Is is it legal to not have the town clerk be the first person to put their hands on these things? I'm not sure.
It's been done in other towns.
But I think I'd, I'd like to know just for sure, you know, and I'm not, hey, nothing against your job, believe me. Uh, but you know, I could picture getting another town planner sometime. Who could, let's say, do what Julian just said. Oh yeah, I gotta take a look at this and they throw it on the back of the desk and it waits there for three weeks before they look at it.
Yeah.
That's a possibility.
Yeah.
Something we wouldn't want.
And I don't want that to happen. Uh, that, that's, that's not correct, so. I think we need to talk about just, just getting something from Town Council. I'm sure it, I'm ninety percent sure, yes, it i- it, it is legal to do it this way. I do think it's better because we know that when the planning board gets to see a plan, we know the application is complete. So. With, with that, the only other thing that I, I'm gonna give you at least as best assurance as I can, yes, at our next meeting, we'll be able to look at that A and R plan. Now I'm off the hook.
Any guess when Town Council might get back?
Nope. Sent to town today.
Thank you. That's all we have.
And it was, yeah. And it was sent with a good explanation, by the way.
Good, perfect.
So.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, next we have our discussion of the draft road acceptance policy.
I think we should table this until we have the full board on the twenty-eighth.
I think so. I would definitely agree and I'm looking I think so, I would definitely agree, and I'm looking, there's a lot here, a lot more than I was first thinking to this.
Yeah.
So.
I agree.
Okay, and, well, not the only other thing that we have here is, uh, Karis, one of us, Quinn, regarding the draft policy. Which I guess he has no problems with. And, is there anything else from the board? Anything else anybody would like to bring up?
Yes.
Bring it.
Our special business meeting that we're supposed to have that was canceled. Is everybody know about the conditions for Britton all states? I hope the heck I threw it in here anyways, um, what it said there that Mr. Blair is supposed to pay two hundred fifty dollars per lot, per house, when it's sold, I guess. And, uh, it's supposed to go to an open space trust, and you already blew the scene here. I had a, a thing in here for, uh, the Ad Commission has a special account for property. We are allowed to, uh, we're, we're holding money, and we can buy property, open space property, and things like that. And that's where I would like to have that two hundred fifty dollars per lot go to, is that special account. And give me a few minutes to go dig it back up again, I'm, I'm positive I threw it back into this thing. It was from the, uh, the town treasurer, and, um. Don't tell me, I hate this. Anyhow, I would really like to, um, make sure that the money does come before the planning board and transfer it over to that special account of, uh, the Ad Commission, um. E L, I think it is, something like that, was the one that the town meeting passed and allowed the Ad Commission, you know, to purchase and hold lands and things like that.
You have to take a look at the specific language of that condition.
This is a land trust.
Just as a land trust.
Yeah. This really ticks me off, because I knew I threw it into a folder. Just to let you know also that, uh, it's, uh, in the account, it's the trust account, there it is. And one other thing, while you're just peeking at that, um, I've been going through the open space. And one of the things I found is that Crawford Road just goes so far, then it turns into East Hill. But then it goes to the town line, but never gets near East Hill Road, which comes off of Pleasant Dale. So I sent a notice to Anita about that, and she's looking into it, but, uh, you know, she doesn't know how the heck that ever happened. So we'll try to get that straightened out, but that's the trust account right there, we already have money in it. And I just like the, yeah, that's the place to put it. And there are ten houses, they're just putting in the foundations for the tenth house. So that's twenty-five hundred dollars that Mr. Blair owes.
Ows, but we have not received or.
Have not received, because, uh, I'm saying right now, we, we probably forgot what was in those water conditions, and that's why I feel that we need to be updated and go over not only this one here, but maybe some of the other ones that are.
Yeah.
Rice lemon, let's make sure everything is functioning in that too. Because of our meeting that we had with the select board, and, uh, HOA that, uh, Mr. Ledger had, was it Ledger, oh, come on, Green.
Lenny.
Lenny, Gengele, set up, and then grabbed the money and disappeared with it, but yet it's still on the books. So how is that gonna be ever straightened out?
It's above my pay grade.
Well, I, I feel that before I leave this organization and leave this world, I want that fixed. You know, because I, to me, for crying out loud, it was set up so that, um, the people could walk around and make, um, very close to Devil's School. And Devil's School had, I, I believe was a playground out there or something like that, and there was talk way back, and I could have sworn it was allow the people to walk around and maybe play or with them or whatever, I don't know, but.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
Well, then let's get out the conditions and let's find out what the heck it was.
You know, there's a walking trail around Britton or Richards Ave, or whatever it is, the one that Lenny made around the swamp, but, uh, there was someone who lived there that says like, it's never been taken care of, obviously, so.
Right, and in the condition, it says if it's not taken care of, the town will take care of it, and then turn around and bill the, uh.
Yeah.
People in, in the, uh.
You know, whoever can do it for the cheapest, and that is subdivision.
Anyways, let's try to get it resolved.
Okay, we have, uh, our last item is public comment. Anybody, you guys, you still have a lot of people sitting here and being very patient.
Yeah. Well, I kinda have two questions, Elizabeth Hussie, Ninety-seven, Jethil Road. How is the town going to deal with Emerald Road? Um, if this subdivision is a, like, it's a done deal. Like, when, you know, when the heavy equipment starts going across there, that's the wettest spot, I can guarantee that one side is wetland, and the other side should be, like. Is the town gonna fix the road before this happens? I mean, what is the plan?
Well, first of all, it's not a done deal.
Good. Okay.
Okay. You know, uh, the, the, the first thing. And I'm gonna make an assumption that may not be true, that this owner is going to do the open space subdivision plan. That requires a special permit. That special permit will be conditioned on, well, we have, probably be twenty-five or thirty different separate conditions.
Yeah.
Well, we have all the standard.
Yeah.
And so forth, but, um, certainly one of the conditions will be what sort of improvements are gonna need to be made to Emerald. Uh, and I think that's already been discussed, that there are at least some portions of it that are gonna have to be widened.
Yeah, we'll have to discuss that when the time comes, that'll be part of the public hearing process, so. I don't think it's proper to discuss that here until we have an application, and we see the scope of the project, and we get the DPW to weigh in on this, so that'll be a discussion point.
There was a corner, and I think some trees had to come down, so we'll find out.
We'll have to see.
And at least from my part, uh, this will be something that, uh, what we will do is, uh, so get the input from the DPW director.
And just because we gave him.
Exactly, he feels is necessary.
Just because the board gave him blessing to go forward with an open space, he could come back with a different design for the public hearing, we don't know that.
That's why I said I am assuming that he does it, we don't know that.
The public hearing would be like this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, but butters would be notified, um, legal ads in the paper, things, all that process.
So my, oh, I had two questions, can I ask them? So I brought this up at your meeting last week, like, what, um, can the public do to make the town, including you guys, um, make the bylaws harder for, um, the developers? Because, you know, it's kinda like at a tipping point, and they've had you guys accommodating them for thirty or forty years, and they're not gonna like it, but like, I mean, you could change the size of the lot, so you don't, like, you could have two hundred feet at the back as well as the front. I mean, you guys know much better than me the things that could be done. But how can the public make you, not gonna excuse me for being kind of rude, but how can we do something about it?
Zoning bylaws would have to be changed, subdivision regulations, you, you know, would have to be changed.
With the open spaces, I knew it would be zoning bylaws, because that's part of us zoning bylaws.
And that's not a simple process, uh, it takes, takes time, and, and there are restrictions. You know, regarding state law, regarding zoning, uh, you know, snobs zoning, all, all those kinds of things that, you know, many towns have tried doing, and in many cases have been shot down. So you, you have to be kinda careful, uh, on doing that, and it's, uh, it is, it's, it's, it's still a balance. Because, you know, if you own a piece of property, you have to have a right to be able to do some things with that.
I'm well aware of that, because I do own a piece of property.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying like make it so that nobody can build anything, but I know that there's many towns around here that are not as accommodating as this town, um.
That's not the way the developers say, as you can see.
And at this point, at this point, it's not like.
You gotta let them do exactly whatever they feel like doing, that's the problem.
Yeah, these are horses' ass.
You said it on me.
Go get them next time.
I, I have a question.
It's been a while, so you're probably right, maybe it does need some upgrading and updating, and, um, try to do something a little better. Personally, I feel like the town should be getting a little, you know, a slice of money for every house lot that comes in here to help pay for a new school or new, fix the roads. And, uh, there are a lot of things that can happen. But right at the moment, thank God, uh, I'm not a developer, because the next big developer on any place he wants to do around the sewer system, he's gonna have to do a huge test, because our sewer system is almost at capacity. So we're gonna be, you know, screwed if somebody else wants to come in and tap into it, because it's not gonna be there. D C I owns the pipe going from Rutland to Holden, you know, through Holden, so how soon are they gonna get it fixed and enlarged?
The other thing you have to bear, bear in mind a little bit is the, the, uh, the state government's posture.
Yeah.
On housing development, uh, and, and that's.
And they wanna dump.
You know, just as an example, the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, I don't know, how many of you have heard of the accessory dwelling unit bylaw? Okay, not very many of you, basically, basically, it, it allows, uh, for, for lack of a better term, in-law apartments in the house. Someone can either take part of the house or put an addition on the house to create a second unit.
And it's basically made certain things this town currently does in other towns illegal.
Yeah.
For instance, you can't require owner occupancy in an accessory dwelling unit. Um, the other thing is, you can't allow them by single A to use by special permit, which this town currently does. It can only be by right or site plan review at most. It basically says the town has no choice, it can be by special permit, but to allow multiple accessory dwelling units, and this is throughout every single residential zoning district in the town. So basically, they are turning every single family zoning district into potential multifamily housing.
You have no, I'm sorry, Janet Brothers, five seater, there's no control?
Well, we're, we're starting, the bylaw subcommittee is starting to work, which is.
What we can.
Because I'm, I.
Okay, but.
You know, I moved to Rutland because it was a little town, and it's creating more and more, pardon my Holden bashing here, but it's turning into Holden where every lot of land has several houses on it. And, you know, you came here because it was more rural than residential, and the city is quickly, quickly coming.
It's becoming more and more difficult for towns to regulate their own land use.
That's a shame, I'm sorry.
Oh, believe me, I've been doing this for twenty-five years, I've seen it gradually.
How do you like to think about that, for crying out loud?
I'll take one.
Uh, Greg Harrison, sixteen Fairview, um, I just had a question with regard to the Emerald, uh, Road property over there. As, as I understand it, the Ware River watershed is actually bordered by the south side of Emerald Road.
Correct.
Is that taken into account, uh, during this, uh, site plan selection?
I do believe, uh, the water does not, uh, the waterway does not come close enough, you have a two-hundred-foot restriction.
Is that what that, okay.
And, and then another two-hundred for a sub, you know, all depends what you're going into, but, uh, it seems to me it's not close enough.
Okay, and that spring, did you, I didn't, I wasn't able to make it to the.
No, but I do have all my thing, I wanted Julian to point out where that spring is. It's supposed to be a.
There's a four, there's a four season spring there, yeah.
Yeah, so I wanna see that, but I think that, yeah, I don't know if Concom is, you know, they're gonna have to go through this thing anyways.
So that goes to the Concom for.
And it's best to have Concom have it, and then have them lay it out, ask Julian to have it laid out.
Okay, did, did, did what you guys decide tonight in terms of the recommendation for conventional versus open space have any binding component to it?
Not, not at the moment, no.
Okay, you were just saying this is the one we endorse.
Yeah.
Did, did you consider that, um, going with a conventional plan would have kept the, the frontage and the lot size minimums current, and going with the open space plan allows him to have that frontage, and then also diminish the lot sizes to the point where he can effectively increase the density of housing in the remaining space?
Well, the remaining space remains open.
Right, so if you take the open space out, whatever that remaining portion is, I don't know what the, what the acreage is, but.
Well, that's, that's one thing that I would definitely have our town engineer, because we only allow what, the one-third that's open space, and, and of that, what's a percentage cannot be over a certain percentage of wetland. It has to be upland.
I think it's fifty percent, yeah, is that what I mean?
And that's one reason why I gotta make sure that it stays that way, because how many of these places around here, these guys, you know, let's, we'll show, we'll show all the, you know, the wetlands, you know, look at, you know, then we can put more houses over on the.
That, right, that's what I mean, yeah, they'll set aside the wetland part, but because of the way that the zoning is, or the bylaws are, is you can now have a hundred-foot frontage, and whatever that minimum land area is, is now smaller.
Yeah.
So it effectively increases the density, you just cram everything that you were gonna put.
But there's still, now there's still gonna be open space in areas, and, uh.
Well, chances are, Roy White, Emerald Road. That area that they're looking at is wetlands. And saying where they're conventional, they can put all these lots, and they can't put shit there. We'll run horses through there, they go up to their knees and muck.
Yeah, supposedly now, I, I don't know for a fact, have they already done perk tests or just sampling?
We only did a couple.
You're not gonna perk that.
They did seven to nine perk tests.
He's always says he can perk a damn swamp.
Seven to nine perk tests they did out there. I would ask, uh, A, A number one, did D E P go with them? Did any of you people call D E P to ask them to go with them? Did you ask the board of health to make sure?
The board of health, Richard said he observed the perk tests.
Yes. Was that during the drought?
I closed my mouth, no.
Again, Deb Carlson, fifty-four Emerald Road, and yes, it would be nice to have been able to tell, ask D E P to have been there. We don't know these things are happening until all of a sudden there's this huge piece of equipment that's rolling through what used to be the field.
Crashing trees down.
Crashing trees down and everything else, and you're like, what is going on here?
About, yeah.
So, we don't have advanced knowledge of any of this, it just happens, all of a sudden the machinery is just there.
And do we have any consideration for the number of wells that are gonna be dropped in that area?
Exactly.
That affects every single person that currently lives there, as well as future development for family members who have land like mine, that. Who have land like mine that uh is in, will be affected by that?
True, very true, but there again, h- h- how many years ago, it was forty something years ago, I remember. The old man was yakking about Cool Sandy Beach, they were so scared to death, he was on the planning board at the time. That they had to put sewer line and water lines all the way down there, cause everybody's gonna be, you know, sucking their wells dry. Never happened, but.
Well, it was also, it was also a a resort community that wasn't occupied year round.
Yeah.
With, you know, children and. Going to school on a daily basis, so I think the the burden on the on the. The natural resources available for everybody to draw from is gonna be huge.
I have no idea what the soil conditions are there, is it any gravel involved, or is it all clay, blue clay, or what?
Well, I I, as far as I understand, one of those had to be fracked. One of those three houses that exist. Had to be fracked.
Already had.
One of them didn't have water for several weeks after the owners took uh possession of the house.
Right, that's cool.
And and one of them had to be fracked, so what, how does that bode for the remainder of the twenty-one or whatever? Houses he proposed to put in. And that's 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 not a small consideration.
Yeah.
And one more question, is is the open space still subject to the subdivision regulations? Cause there's very specific wording in there as to the upgrades of roads, access roads, which Emerald Road would be an access road.
Road, and by rights. We used to have the right to say, hey, you are going to.
It's very specific in them.
Cause it's, it still is a subdivision.
And still put down, we have Blair for Hilltop putting in X number of yards of gravel. On Britnall, so we could probably, you know, the same thing. And I can't see why not.
The the subdivision regulations give you every right to do so.
Yeah. It's there.
Please do that.
Can't ask them to hot top it, but.
I wouldn't want it hot top, people fly down there, with the amount of new building that has, I have been there thirty years, okay, in that one location. But the amount of building that has gone on in just maybe the past ten years, the traffic has increased exponentially. I would never be in favor of paving that road.
Yeah.
Because they fly down it, it's just a cuddle with all the new other developments. They fly down it now as a dirt road, I cannot imagine what it would be like if that road were paved.
And I hate to be you for on a horse working a lot when they probably don't even.
My horse, there are trailer him places to ride now because it's not safe. I do remember the days, every Sunday, there were a group of us that would ride around the block, yes, and people were courteous and.
Curious stop and wait or and things like that, but nowadays.
Those days are gone.
Yeah, that's terrible. I like this conversation, I mean. Yeah. In all honesty, I wish we had people at all our meetings like this. Not only keep in touch what what's going on, so you can take back what's going on and. And hopefully find uh somebody to take my place on this board.
When you come up with the number for open space, the number of houses they could build. You're looking at the conventional plan first.
That's correct.
Are you making sure that those are really buildable lots in that conventional plan?
Well, thing is, the thing is, no matter what, Gene, they could, they could. They could propose twenty lots and only seventeen could perk, and there's nothing we can do about it. If they show twenty lots, that's the maximum they can build. Our open space, hold on, under our open space design, they're not allowed to build. Any more density than what's allowed under conventional subdivision, so if they can get twenty-four lots out of conventional. The max they can do over in an open space is twenty-four lots, but it's not guaranteed they can build all those lots.
Twenty in the.
Twenty-four, whatever the number is, they could show twenty-four lots, but only nineteen could perk. The, when they get an approval, that's the maximum number of lots.
Have to prove they perk before you come up with the number to cluster or.
No.
And can they use all swampland as a lot?
Well, no, we have percentages as far as the open space, only a certain percentage is allowed to be wetlands.
Right.
If they did conventional.
And that's what, no, no, but but this was already reviewed, Gene, this was already viewed when, and this is part of the reason I'm here, and this is part of the argument you saw. Is it took two iterations of these plans before I put it before the planning board, because the previous iterations did not meet our zoning regulations. That's why they didn't come before the board. Because they didn't, cause certain lots didn't meet the minimum frontage, certain lots didn't meet the minimum lot size. That's what I take objection to, is that's why I'm here. To make sure that our regulations are being met before they come before the board, if someone has a problem with that, I'm sorry. But that's why I'm here, it's in black and white, that's what, that's my job, to enforce the regulations we have.
Thank you.
Where's the, where does the planning part? Just I just, this me for my own edification.
What do you mean by planning?
Cause your, your title's a town planner.
Correct.
So what are you planning?
We look, we also, I I also work with the Economic Development Commission.
Okay.
I also work with the bylaw subcommittee on zoning bylaw amendments, for instance, the use tables, they got approved at the last town meeting. To try and make the zoning bylaws more user friendly. Out of that table, Dick brought up some points about things we may wanna change as far as what's allowed where. We realize that there are some areas that need to be cleaned up. Um, again, but also. It's tough to be proactive when the state is consistently giving us stuff we have to deal with, like the accessory dwelling unit. And having to balance the fact that I know that only a certain amount of zoning bylaw amendments can go before a town meeting. Before they get overwhelmed, so we already have three significant zoning bylaw, right, so we have to kind of stagger it out. And I've been told that, you know, at fall town meeting, you know, not to do anything that's too. Heavy lifting to do more housekeeping, so I'm always trying to keep that in mind too, as far as planning out what we do, it can't happen all at once. And that's the challenge is to, okay, what do we do when, okay, so um, all of that is taken into consideration.
Cause my my, and the thrust of my question is, uh, 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 thank you for your explanation. I I I guess my concern is, I I don't see a lot of, I know we we had the master plan. But I don't see a lot of rubber meeting the road where where. Citizens like myself get a good feeling that the town has an idea where they wanna be in ten years.
Right.
And that doesn't include, you know, forty thousand new uh residents with. You know, cookie cutter stamped lots on a hilltop that every single one of them has wells.
Right, the issue is, if somebody comes forward with a residential subdivision where the lots meet the minimum dimensional regulations. And the road meets the town designs, the planning board legally cannot deny that project. That's, that's, see.
No kind of manager.
No, well, we did have a growth management, but it but it but it sunsetted last May and wasn't renewed. And even then, what happened was, when, hold on, when that, when that was approved. The big subdivisions that are going on right now, like Britnall states, were exempted from that. So it really didn't accomplish what the town wanted, because those projects were already in the pipeline and already got their approvals. Before that bylaw was implemented, so it didn't apply to any of the big subdivisions that are currently going on right now.
Sure, but can we, can we shut off the pipeline for?
It's it's not, it's not, it's not that simple.
Does one, anything else start in?
This is, this is a challenge in every community I've been in, is. Planning board tried, it's ve- it becomes more and more difficult to be proactive, because. Towns are always at least one step behind what's happening in the development world and the private sector. The best we can do is try and play, is try and catch up as much as we can. So it's 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 very, it's a very complicated thing, it's not a very simple thing, believe me. Twenty-five years, I've had my share of frustrations.
Sure.
Um, with having to deal with stuff that's handed down from the state, trying to plan out and trying to guide a town, and then, boom. Here you go, you have to do this now, it's like, okay, now you have to deal with that, so you're constantly having things thrown in, like monkey wrenches thrown in the gears. As you're trying to do things and you're having to react rather than be proactive.
How can we support you in that role?
We're, we're working on it.
Yeah.
We're working on it, um, you know. For instance, when, you know, you know, we, when the bylaw subcommittee and the planning board, when we bring something forward to town meeting. Well, honestly, the way, honestly, the way I can feel supported is behavior like that. To be honest with you, in my career, I've never dealt with behavior like that, so it's tough for me. I've never been attacked like that, that's very difficult for me to deal with, to be honest with you.
It was totally uncalled for.
It was a show for Agardee. That's what, that's what that was, that was theater.
You know, and I've had certain develop, I've had certain developers make threats to me that I don't really appreciate.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be legal.
He was very rude and.
It shouldn't be legal.
When I was on Concom, and when he first showed up with uh. Another person that was chair at Concom. He told me, or told all of us at the board, I can perk a swamp. And he knew how to do it too. So trust me.
My, my first interaction with him was a, was an estate lot at twenty-three Miles Road, I've been here about fifteen months, he walked in. Slapped the plans down my desk and said, well, this is a rubber stamp anyway, I've already, I've already done the site work, it's already, it's already in. Okay, so, believe me.
Can you shut down a project like that?
I can't, that's the thing, that's the frustration, is I don't have any enforcement capability, the Conservation Commission does, and the Building Commissioner does, I don't. So.
Would it be valuable for you to have that, cause that's something.
Well, again, we're work, we're, we're working, we're working on that, believe me, there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes.
Sure.
And uh.
Can we support you or the mission?
Thank you.
And just to let you people know, there is one more subdivision that may start in the springtime that we were told of. And that's Noble Hill down here towards Long Pond. How many houses are?
What are they gonna do to the school system?
So, just to let you know, that that may be starting. That was done a long time ago.
Management plan.
Yeah.
Say, why is, why are we not working on a growth management plan that works?
Well, unfortunately, the town's gone ridiculous in the past three decades. Unfortunately, the other s- select person is off now and they're the ones that.
I mean, we let this last one lapse, so now people are gonna file for four hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Building permits, when we reenact another one, those are all gonna be grandfathered in, so.
Yeah.
The growth management's gonna do us no good.
There's, well, never mind, I won't say.
Running the red every year, because there's too many s- school, school age kids.
Correct.
And we keep building these houses, the house four, five, six children, and we're doing nothing about it.
Schools are overcrowded.
Okay. I I, let's put it this way, uh, I just spoke about two hundred and fifty dollars per lot.
No, and I know, I appreciate it, but that, that twenty-five thousand dollars a lot.
But, you're right, why isn't the select for doing something like that to help?
I mean, at least.
Parable night turkey hell. So I've heard two, two things, one, and I've heard it before, and and this is not disparaging anything anybody said. But you're saying that A and R is not a given, but yet it is.
Well, and A and R is different.
I mean, I.
Yeah.
If if there's, if there's a loophole and you wanna tell us off camera, so that it's not out there in the ether, but. I mean, what, what possibly could shoot one of these down?
What do you, uh, so, A and R, I I've I've a feeling you're confusing A and R versus special permits for the open space design.
Well. Beth said, in in A and R is a given.
Well, an A and R is something where if somebody comes forward where they want to create a lot. Subdivide a lot or adjust a lot line on a lot that has existing frontage on. A public road, a private road, it could be an ancient way, it could be a dirt path sometimes. Then the, that that doesn't require public hearing, and the planning board has twenty-one days to act on it.
Right.
That's where the scope of review for the planning board is very, very limited, it all comes down to access. If the board determines that there's not proper access, yes, they can deny that A and R, but it very, very rarely happens. What the board's deciding on this property is the difference between a conventional subdivision and a special permit for an open space design.
Twenty houses are gonna be built.
Twenty-something, yeah, twenty-two or twenty-four.
And there's, is, there's nothing that we can do in in the hardship now that is come, that that this town faces. With every, every house that is built. You can just assume there's going to be at least twenty children and that's, and that's. Four thousand dollars for every child, every year. That we're in.
Four thousand dollars, more like fifteen thousand dollars per.
That's how much ours, you know, so, so I'm saying the difference between is, well. And then you're saying that there's no other public services, if if the average. Tax bill is, I'm gonna round up to ten just for numbers, say four thousand of that goes to the school, per kid. And that's just one, so we're in the red, and that's not even then leaving anything left. For public services and all the other pieces of the the pie that we are feeding every time. And and the the water, the sewer, I mean, the water, the sewer, all of that, they're they're commodities that we just. They're not unlimited, and and where do we show that there's a hardship in this town? And that's what I've heard with zoning bylaws, we have to prove there's a hardship. When, I mean, are we gonna be broken, are we gonna be a bankrupt town, I mean, what, what is? I I think we're just frustrated that you have a room of people that want to.
This is why I think the, the town implemented the agricultural accessory use site plan review. To give people who own farm property another option to keep their property viable. So they don't sell it off to a developer and turn it into a one hundred house subdivision. Things like that that the town has tried to do, um, the town centers, the town center zoning district that goes along fifty-six and one twenty-two A. Is another attempt to kind of make those properties, give them some options in terms of development other than residential. So there have been attempts by the town to do some of those things and. Gonna continue looking at those things to try and, to try and slow this, it's very, very difficult, I gotta be honest, it's not easy.
No.
Yeah, we tried getting money for the, to buy that property on Emerald, and that was a, a very eye-opening experience.
And the fact is, it's not just Rutland, most towns do not have the available money. To just buy up these properties when they become available, they just don't.
So in, in looking at that, if we had done. If if we have something set up in in.
CPA?
No, I don't, I I don't wanna talk CPA, you and I have talked about. I remember th- three years ago or so, we talked about having a fund, it sounds similar to what Badcom now has. Some kind of fund that you could, or I don't know, you know. Enough conversations with a bank that you can just, you know, know, but, you know, I was thinking with that six hundred thousand dollars that we said no to Emerald Road. That might have cost each household five or ten dollars over the course of thirty years to purchase that. And, you know, the break even point would have been about seven years. Um, for the cost of just the number of kids going to the school for for seven years, so. There are, there are things that we can do, but I, you know, other than. Waiting for a board position to open, I mean, you have our ears, we, you, we have your ears now, and you have ours, and how do we do something? How do we not let Noble Hill come up and get grandfathered and?
But isn't that already subdivided, I mean, he.
Yeah, that's, that's an approved subdivision, that's already, yeah.
That's everything, everything's a done deal, it's like.
Well, he did have it up for sale, and it's too bad it didn't sell to DCR. But they won't, they don't have the money to, you know, to do it.
But it's to stop the next big development, that may already be through, but what happens when one of our other hundred acre farms sells to Blair? And they build, they wanna put in another hundred houses. I mean, we can't stop the ones that are already in, which Blair quite, quite very clearly pointed out. In the last, last growth management plan, but.
And I was told by my wife, I gotta stop buying scratch tickets and the other stuff.
Like to speak for Puma Coma. Uh, Mike Pantos, Puma Gussett Road, I know a number of years ago, there was something passed at, on the floor of town meeting. Uh, to limit to thirty-five building permits uh per year, which was horribly written. Um, and should, and in my opinion, should not have been in place, and there should have been an alternative with regards to lot size instead. What is, my question is, where does that stand, is that still in place, and what is the minimum lot size for a single family dwelling?
It depends.
If you're in the R sixty zone, it's sixty thousand square feet, if you're on the R forty zone, it's forty thousand square feet.
What's that as far as decimal for, in the form of decimal for an acre?
Well, it's forty-three, five, sixty for an acre, so sixty is about almost one and a half. Forty thousand square feet is just under an acre, probably.
It doesn't have sewer and water, one and a half acres.
Depending if the water sewer.
No, the the R forty, R sixty designation, R forty, it has to be a full acre.
Okay.
Not forty thousand, it's gonna be forty, forty-three thousand.
Why is it R forty?
So right now.
You know, R forty-three.
Each of these new developments going in, does, does each lot have to be at least an acre?
No.
No, okay.
Because open space design.
Open space design, it, yeah.
Doesn't sound very open.
And pump stations.
Well, it depends if it's an estate lot as well, so that's, that's the thing, so. I've I've said this to the planning board, I said, this is the first time I've worked in where they have an open space design that allows A and R lots. And allows estate lots as part of your open space design. Usually you have to have conventional shaped lots, so that's, that's more flexible than I've seen in other towns. For instance, in the town of Rantham, in open space design, that first lot coming off the public roadway had to be a minimum of five hundred feet from the public roadway. So you, that subdivision was tucked away, and you didn't see it.
So can we do that?
We gotta change the zoning bylaws if.
How do you do that?
Gotta go to town meeting, gotta get, gotta go to bylaw subcommittee to work on something and.
Doesn't the planning board have a bylaw subcommittee?
The bylaw subcommittee is the planning board.
Right, so do.
Right, so do you ever discuss these things?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we just met last week.
So these.
What we can, what can we do to support you?
With an idea submission form that you can just say.
Well, Austin and I have actually worked on that.
Yeah.
This is.
A submission, no, 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 but.
It's verbal, but.
Yeah, to have official submission forms for ideas for zoning bylaw amendments.
And we can chop through a list.
Yeah, Austin and I are working on that for the website.
Really, great.
And that's.
Just to be supportive, I mean, not to be tearing it down.
Which gives you guys an opportunity to.
Well, and this is not just Rutland, this is other towns I've worked in. What is really helpful is when we have discussions and we have the public hearings before the planning board going into a town meeting and nobody attends. But then all of a sudden on town meeting floor, everyone tears it apart and everyone has questions. It's helpful when people participate in the discussion leading into town meeting, that's happened everywhere I've been, it's not unique to Rutland, and that can, that can be frustrating. And so that's one thing that would be very, very, very helpful, you know, I'm always available by email, my email's on the website, my phone number's on the website. I'm, and, you know, despite what Julian says, I have an open door policy, asking, you can come in and spend as much time with me as possible, as long as I don't have a meeting coming up. I'll spend as much time as as you want, sitting and discussing these things. So um, you know, that's, that's, so that's, you could come to a bylaw subcommittee meeting. And I actually think the meeting on the twenty eighth's gonna be a joint meeting of the bylaw subcommittee and the planning board.
Yeah.
And so at that, you know, again, you can, you can submit ideas to me through email currently.
Well, that's what I was curious.
Yeah, you can send me an email saying, hey.
And not to tear down, but to support up, you know?
Yeah.
When you say go to a meeting before the town meeting?
Because these are on agendas, these things are discussed continuously, because every bylaw subcommittee meeting is a public meeting. And agendas are posted, if, you know, I I basically, I have the entire planning board meeting scheduled for two thousand twenty five with all the deadlines of when things need to be submitted on the website. But if, you know, if you wanna know when a bylaw subcommittee meeting is coming up, you can call me, ask me, send me an email, say, hey, is there a meeting coming up? Um the next one's gonna be a joint, one on the twenty eighth with the planning board. Um but, you know, I could say, well, we don't have one scheduled, but check back with me, or I'll say, yes, the next one's on such and such a date.
So you're talking about venues like this before a town.
Yes, correct, yes.
All right, I just wanna make sure I was.
Yes.
If anybody's not aware, that um that new Facebook page Rutland residents need to know, I think is really helpful and.
Yes, yes.
And like keeping you informed of.
What's Facebook? Facebook?
Oh boy, I lost cause.
Also, you can go on the town website and check that you wanna get agendas ahead of time.
Yes.
So like you can sign up to get planning boards.
Oh, cool, I didn't see that.
For notifications, yeah.
Notifications of all the meetings and all the minutes.
Is that under the calendar?
Uh, it's somewhere about communication.
If you go on the website, on the mega menu, there's a tab that says residence, and under that it says notify me.
Okay.
And you can choose whatever you want, and I would also recommend signing up for the news and announcements, cuz that's where we send out, hey, there's a town meeting coming up, or. You know, we have Rutland Day at the Woo Sox, or all the important things you wanna know about, we'll go right to your email. And you can choose what you want, so you're not getting stuff that you aren't particularly interested in.
Great, thank you.
Wow, I never knew that.
I miss single one of them, and it's a part time job, taking my email.
It's okay.
Nah, that's gonna take my track the time away, nah, never mind.
Schedule is, we're always meeting the second.
Yeah, the meeting schedule is the entire two thousand twenty five meeting schedule with all the deadlines is on the web, on the webpage, on the planning department webpage.
Yeah, so we're always here the second and fourth Tuesday, so even if you don't know what's going on, if you just walked in, we'd be, we'd be here unless. You know, we're under quorum.
Under quorum, or there's a weather cancellation or something like that.
So. On the fly, you can just pop in here at six thirty.
We're always here, that sounds kind of morbid. We're always here.
And it helps if you guys are involved, cuz, you know, we work on, we think we're working on, but, you know, if you bring up something that's, you know, relatable to.
I had a discussion with someone today about the changes that we're working on, and I I go back to the saying. You can't turn the Titanic in a, in five seconds. It takes a, it change, and that kind of change takes a long time. Right now, we're trying to influence change and it's, it takes time, it takes time, and, you know. Doing the best, best we can to implement as much change as possible, but there's a lot to do.
Yeah, and thankfully we have John, cuz it's a lot, a lot to do. Keeping an eye on everything, so.
Trying to.
I had one thing for forty eight hours, but I guess I'll leave it for public comment, it seems like we're getting new telephone poles down Maple Ave.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Oh my gosh.
Do you know about it? You don't, so we're just getting them for free, it sounds like, so.
Awesome, well, that's good, about time.
They've been there for a week.
Yeah, they, they laid them down about a week ago, yeah, well, I think they go down to the.
The heights.
Yeah, the Rutland Heights, so it must be something that's not in compliance.
Taking a bigger line down there to supply.
I think those poles are a bigger diameter than what's. Well, they're taller too, it looks like, yeah, so, just thought I'd bring it up.
All right, with that, on that note, I move to adjourn.
You were late by two and a half hours.
No, anytime, I'd rather, I'd rather do this anytime.
All the favor?
Yes, please.